I'd love to call this meeting to order. I know that there's some public participation potentially tonight. I don't want to waste anybody's time who came here for our scheduled start. I would love to get my own committee members out of here and reassemble as well. Before we begin, I just want to thank everyone who participates in this entire process of putting together the budgets for our two schools, for all their hard work and dedication. This is not a process that takes weeks or months. This is a whole year process. After tonight, when we vote this budget, we still have to go forward to town meetings. And once June comes, we are going to start the work for next year's budget. So I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate my work that goes into this from all that ends and angles for our three communities and from the committee and the administration. So I would call this meeting to order tonight at 6:03 PM, and I will open up the floor. Any public participation? Would anybody from the public like to speak to the committee tonight? All right. Seeing no public participation, we'll move on to the student presentations. The high school robotics presentation. The floor is yours.
Where do you want to sit? Is it up in the middle?
Sure.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Bradley Smucker, and I'm a senior, and I attend Silver Lake High School. And so essentially this year, I've been working on my version of a senior black project. And essentially, my project is just the altering wheelchair, which in essence, it overcomes all of the obstacles that a handicapped person faces on an immediate basis. So I'm not even here to showcase this. So many of the difficulties that a handicapped person faces are such difficulties like, like, people in military always complain about being looked down upon, and you never really look anybody in the eye and shake their hand or anything like that, or be elevated to bar top surfaces or anything like that, which you would need, as well as there are a variety of different odd, different pathways that are not really like level, I guess, and very hard to maneuver through these, as well as like dirt or any type of non-concrete or unpaved terrain. So essentially, I have designed this to not only overcome those obstacles, but to actually access theirs. So the first feature would be the stair climbing capability. So this robot is actually able to go upstairs, but as you will notice, right here, I built in a gyro, which actually keeps the patient, I, Jia Jieh Man, level. And so essentially, what this does is it keeps the weight directed downwards so the person doesn't actually fall out of the chair when you go up at that height. And...
Oh, that's cool. Did that move automatically when you went up?
Yeah, it automatically started to make its sense of it. So I'm still working on like the type of recalibration features of it, so I have to fix that coding part. But besides that, it has multiple other features, such as, as I said earlier, it's able to actually elevate the patient to elevate services, I guess, and so you can be able to actually look people in the eye, shake their hand, and I can go up to any type of bar top or anything like that. And then it has one 80 rotation I'm doing, so you don't have to move the base per se if you want to like actually look around or anything like that. So you can move the base, and then I've actually built in automatic handle features right here, so when this sensor comes in, it takes darkness, like we can see that, but the light actually turn off and on. And yeah, so I like to have a plus. It's an altering vehicle, so I kind of went for the tank design, and I have designed my own treads, so these actually, these little fins right here are able to actually grab onto the base of the steps and be able to actually mount them. So this is an example of a very extreme condition of what you'll have to overcome, but to be able to still do it. And as I said again, the recalibration features.
So one of the arguments, you know, people argue that it's legal and folks can do it, and that's fine, but I, my belief is that having it in the town, and whether it's within 500 feet or not of a school, I think just proximity and having it there is not a, not a good thing. My push is to wait a year, you know, do the, I'm for the ban. Again, it's just a one-year ban, we're not allowed to ban it for...
So those are essentially the main features that are in this, and essentially the whole, all the capabilities. And so is there any courses or anything that you guys have, or...
I just, I'm blown away that there's mobility specialists all over the country who would love to get a sneak peek into your project that you call your senior project. It's so much more than a senior project. This is a culmination of so many different parts of your life all coming together and to share it with us tonight. I just feel honored to see what you're capable of doing and know that we had some small part in who you are as a young man, and I can only imagine how bright your future's going to be.
Thank you so much. I really want to thank Mr. Shute also for this guidance, this entire process. And well, I just really became interested in this whole project because I want to study biomechanical engineering when I go to college, and I'm very interested in the mechanical part of this. So just all the mobility and the prosthetic limbs and surgery component and things that I would be able to manufacture would be very interesting to me. So I'm very excited about that next part of my life.
I think you're going to be very successful in your endeavor.
Thank you.
When did you choose the project? When did you choose this project?
Oh, so actually, last year, I was with Mr. Shute to propose an independent study where I would essentially be in the back of a classroom, and I would be able to kind of study what interests me and what I would be doing in college. And so I was thinking about all the various things I could do, and just this kind of came to mind because, well, none of my family's been affected by handicaps, but I've always seen people who are in like their struggle and having to kind of put so much effort into doing basic things we would take for granted, so I wanted to kind of make some reparations to overcome those.
So I also want to just reiterate how awesome this is. I think this is great. Your future is bright. I mean, just having problem-solving skills and being able to look at something and design something, doesn't matter what you study in college, you're going to do really well. But I also want to commend Mr. Shute and other teachers that we have here at Silver Lake for coming up with programs and helping these kids really just sort of explore all the things that are possible. These are things that I never had in my high school, and I went to a really good high school, so it's just awesome that we have, we have teachers who are able to work with the kids on projects and programs and studies like this.
This is a great place to work, like the stairs, Mr. Rafini had one of the kids cut the stringers for us. It's one of those places where when you need help, you can go to one of your coworkers, and they're going to try and help you out. And I think it's a really testament to the climate of Mrs. Gill and to Mrs. Blackwell and Jill.
And just to bounce it back on to you a little bit, and if you feel like you don't want the spotlight, talk about the other teachers at Silver Lake who do independent studies. Is this something that you have to do with your course load, or is this something you take on yourself?
It's something that we take on in addition to our, for the most part, in addition to our regular schedule, so...
So this is above and beyond for you and any other staff person, for the most part, who does this?
Yeah. I really want to hammer that aspect of it home. You know, we, tonight are going to talk about a budget, right? And people ask us if we're getting the value for the dollar we're spending. Well, our teachers do things like mentor young men like this, so they can explore fully what their interests and passions are in an educationally supportive and sound manner. So thank you for speaking to it. I didn't want to embarrass you, but I think very highly of the whole...
I want to make some funnies, trying to...
I know. It absolutely did, but we appreciate your leadership as well.
Great job.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming back. I saw Bradley present this at the STEM, when we had the STEM week, and I have to admit, I wanted to play with it some more, so thank you for coming back. It's awesome. It's a grand project. Really proud of you.
The red block, maybe that's one of the little problems I'll be making, picking it up and showing them, because that's, yeah, the interesting thing.
So another component to this wheelchair...
Wait, you have more features?
Yes.
No, it's just, how we solve the problem, and I like...
Interesting, okay.
Just point it out.
So I've worked with a bunch of these X components, which are pretty much everything on here, is a X part. And so one kind of problem that I had to get around was, so actually, I've spoken something to those, but what did you actually have to come around was that when this kind of went up, it produced a very large torque load on the entire base right here, and it was kind of messing everything up. And so I needed to kind of go to different measures in order to ensure that like it had the torque to actually elevate this. So I actually inputted a more gear to the base of this, which actually did produce some of the most hefty torque, I guess. And actually, I had to come up with various gear chains, or sorry, yeah, gear trains. And so right here, I need to make some sort of device, I guess, that would be able to holster not only the worm gear, but be able to mount this double-sided gear to it. And so I had to go on to AutoCAD and actually 3D print my own, this little red box here is actually 3D printed right next door, and so that was very, very nicely able to do. And so, yeah.
So you fabricated a component that you couldn't find using a 3D printer.
That's awesome.
It's wonderful.
If you're wondering what a worm gear is, it's the thing that moves their chute or your snowboard around, it was like a screw.
Excellent.
Amazing.
That was the highlight of our evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
We wish you nothing but luck in your future. Thank you. Very, very impressive. So I will entertain a motion to approve the February 14, 2019 regular session agenda. Minutes from our meeting, please.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Fantastic. Principal Gill.
Hello, everyone. Weird seeing you in daylight.
Yes.
Get us out of here before sunset.
I like it, I like it a lot.
So I have a few things to highlight in this meeting. I want to start off by sharing a little bit about the experiences our students have with therapy dogs who have come in the past couple of years now. We've been, we've got a really good partnership with Dog Don't Just Do It. They are a licensed therapy dog group who provide, starting from first, we get it for free, they volunteer. So the last couple of years, they've been coming in the week before mid-year exams and all final exams. They just offer a nice little study break for our students, it's always a big hit. A large group who is always proud of lots of students and teachers who just need a little bit of a break before the stress of exams. The program has grown over the years, we have more and more dogs each time, and we've actually started bringing them in on our staff PD days as well, because we both want some public time as well. So recently, our Justin MacCanneller, Mrs. Carr, her dog has passed therapy dog training and is now registered and certified therapy dog. His name is Bodhi, he's a verma poodle who's hypoallergenic. So we are interested in exploring the possibility of him being sort of a regular addition to our staff here at the agency. So Mrs. Carr and I, we went to Marchville High School earlier this week, and we shadowed Nala, who is their therapy dog, goes to school with them every single day, to learn a little bit more about how they, you know, welcome the dog into the community and into the building of students, and what that looks like for both the counselor and the dog, and the students and the staff, and the community members. So it was pretty neat. The students can schedule visits with Nala, the dog, in addition to scheduling visits, obviously with their counselor. Teachers can schedule coordinate visits, so if there's a big test, let's say there's a big test tomorrow, they can invite the dog up for a few minutes before the exam, just have a little bit of a study break before that, or maybe get a break midway through a bigger assignment. Psychology classes, have invited Nala to their class to study conditioning. The construction classes built her a dog house for the courtyard. The art classes use her as a model for their photography. She goes to gym class, she walked to the apartment for their prom last year, so she's really become an intricate part of their school community. And one of the things anecdotally that our staff shared with us is that they've noticed a change in the vibe in some of their students who tend to have more anxiety, and sort of a bit more calmness to the building, if you will. So we're hoping that Bodhi can be able to visit us on a regular basis, you know, not a day to start, but to come in maybe more regularly than just to do the four exams, so that students can have their study breaks. Something that our parents have asked us about in the past, having done it to them more than just the week before our big task. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Carr for taking the time to have her dog registered and preparing for it, to take the time to do that. So we're excited to get her a Laker collar, and come visit every now and then.
Yes. Sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be right now. How is, how are we covered from a child perspective, individual teacher group, and her personal dog?
So the therapy dog are licensed and insured separately.
Okay, so if the dog decides to fight somebody, it's covered by the separate insurance policy over at the school?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. All right, less exciting, but I'll agree for our students. I have a donation request. A 2006 Dodge Charger from Samantha Reynolds in Plymouth for a donor program to use curriculum. Okay, we consider approving that.
Do I have a motion to accept the donation?
No, no.
Do I have a second?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
It's unanimous. And again, as always, could you send a letter of thanks? Thank you very much.
We have finally received our official NEAS report from our visiting team that came in October. We got it at the end of February. Everything that the visiting committee wrote in their report matched exactly what we had in our self-reflection, which is a good thing. So we're all in the same page in terms of things that are our strengths and things that we would like to, that we identify as things we'd like to work on over the next couple of years. So our seasonal visit will be in October of 2020. So between now and then, we need to work on writing our improvement plan, and we need to actually show that we're taking steps towards meeting the recommendations that were made to us. And so two things that are sort of on the forefront that we're going to start on already this school year. The first is looking at our curriculum, and we have some consultants coming in March 29th, April 2nd, and April 3rd. They're going to meet with some of our leadership team, as well as some of our teachers, looking at a standard-driven curriculum, where teachers really help to drive their high learning goals for students. So we're going to look at having a common curriculum across all of our content areas. That in and of itself would be probably a realistically three to five-year process, which NEAS recognizes and understands, but maybe we need to show that we're making steps towards having that in place. I'd like to thank Jill for her help with that, because there's still some grant funding available to be used to bring those folks in. And then the other thing that we, that was identified by NEAS is taking a longer half-hour schedule and trying to find a way to incorporate common planning time for our teachers, as well as academic support period for our students. And because we're a little bit wonky with our CTE classes, needing longer periods or blocks of time, in our content areas, we can be very careful that we're still meeting the needs of all of our students. So again, Jill was helpful in securing some grant funds. We have Scott Stewart coming in right after spring break to take a look at our schedule. He's going to meet with some folks in the building and just give a feel for what we need, and he's going to help us try to devise something that will help sort of check those things off of our needs list in terms of that academic support period for students, common planning time for teachers, just overall, sort of looking at our schedule in a better way. So I and I have talked at like, you know, the middle school and high school have different schedules, so we're hoping that some of the middle school folks can join us for that and see where the conversation takes us.
Could I ask a question on that? And Jill, this is going to be mostly to you. I acknowledge that we have a curriculum adoption cycle that we kind of go through. Do you plan on, once we get up and running with this curriculum, we'll be writing lots of it maybe at once, to then have that also fall into a secular type of renewal?
So what I'd like to see happen, and we've had this conversation with the curriculum coordinator, Mrs. Carr, and with the principals as well. The reality is that curriculum should never be complete. It should be a living thing, and the years of writing a curriculum and putting it on a shelf, that was the written curriculum, but what actually happens, the implemented curriculum will often do different things. And so we're hoping that by using this backwards design approach, not only will it help us to be meeting the state expectations as to how our curriculum is written, but more importantly, if you've ever used this, this format with time, it's actually quite transformative, and it changes the way and liberates in terms of what you're able to teach, because you really forces teachers to think about what's most important for students to know and be able to do, as opposed to trying to cover it all and only touching upon certain things and not really providing those real-life problem-solving opportunities for students that makes the learning valuable. And so one of the things that we've talked about are ways that we can house and store our curriculum. For years, the only platform was Atlas, and it's a very good platform because you can pull in the standards, and it's easy for teachers to collaborate and change and add. You can also maintain an original copy so people can modify it. So while the scope and sequence is common, teachers themselves can make changes and adjustments, and the curriculum will not be scripted, so not every classroom will be exactly the same. There are some strengths, one of the benefits to using Google Docs or something of that nature would be that it's free, but it doesn't have, at least at this point, the same type of features that a platform like Rubicon, Atlas, or, there's actually a new one now, there's a new game in town that someone had sent me that. So I have seen it work where the teachers first wrote their curriculum and then put it into a platform. I've also seen it work where you get the platform first and teachers use it because it's a tool that helps facilitate. We've talked about both, and given our circumstances, we want to move forward with writing, beginning to write the curriculum first and beginning to have a better understanding of P D before we start researching and looking into those kinds of platforms.
And backwards design and understanding by design, the two gurus are Grant Wiggins and Jay McTide, and you've managed...
We've got 10 associates, and they're going to provide us with a facilitator to help us.
So under Jill's leadership, she's been able to pull in one of the founding gurus of the backwards design process, to teach our teachers how to look at curriculum a little bit differently, and empowering them to create their own documents, and empowering them even further to be able to, to look at those and adjust them on the fly when they see the needs of the students in front of them, instead of having to wait until the adoption cycle comes up in three or four years down the line. So that's wonderful. Thank you for that opportunity to talk about the curriculum. I appreciate it.
And Scott Stewart is a former principal, also a blue ribbon school principal, who is known for his hybrid-type schedules and outside-of-the-box kind of thinking. He will not be coming here to try to sell a certain format for the schedule, but rather help facilitate conversations of helping the team put forward what's most important in the schedule, take into consideration the complicated needs of also having a vocational program as well, to try to help think about creative ways to meet those priorities, but maintain what's important to the school.
Great. Wow.
And then, after you speak in the morning a few times already, I have this meeting for hours. So much to share. He's been giving me homework assignments, so we're looking forward to meeting him in person and having him help us through this process. All right, lastly, I've got you by keywording a lot, school updates. Yeah, absolutely.
So what is the biggest issue with the CTE program and the other requirements?
Well, it's not that it's an issue, it's just that our CTE students prefer to be a meaningful experience for them, so their shop times are longer than the standard 56-minute period. So they will have, you know, if I'm not in CTE, I might be, I have math first period, and I may have art second period, and band third period. But if Jim's in CTE, he's going to have auto shop first, second, third period. So you have those larger chunks of time to really limit for one part, and, you know, be able to get in and dive into the bigger projects that we do, whether it's going off sites of Golden Garage, or Golden Car Training, or Run Free School. So it's really just allowing them to have, they really need the three-hour time of time every day for their shops, so it's just an interesting dynamic that we always have to keep in mind in our schedule.
And it's the graduation requirements that make those other classes line up with the shop times that's the issue?
Yeah, well, they still get all of them to our classes every day, so if they have their shop classes in the morning, they'll have their math and their math classes during the day. Their schedule is definitely, a CTE student definitely has a little bit less flexibility, if you will, but, you know, we're able to work it out, and they're still, they can take foreign language, they can, they can take AP classes, they can. It's just our schedule, you know, we used to have block scheduling years ago, so the way that our schedule's set up now, you know, it's, we're having a hard time wrapping our heads around, like, how do we build in additional time if we want to have sort of this academic support period day without taking away from, you know, our regular classes, but also the shop classes? And that's why we have the funky rotate every day, with 1, 2, 3, you're always in the morning, 5, 6, and 7, always moving to a different corner. There's no primary reason, because there's no pattern, but it doesn't make sense, so what's the rotation? They're like, I don't know, it's on the back of my chart, right? There we are. None of us have it memorized. Day one is easy, day two is easy, day four is easy. The other ones, there's no pattern, so none of it doesn't stick in our head. So, yeah, we just want to make sure that all of our students are supported, and it may turn out that maybe there isn't something that we like better, maybe this is what we have right now is, is the best for us, and then we'll stick with that, you know, we don't need to make any change of that, so, just to get an idea.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm happy to share that 12 of our fall winter sports teams were voted as team sportsmanship winners. It's important to note that this is voted on by their opponents, so it's other schools who vote on these teams. And so I'd like to congratulate our football, boys soccer, field hockey, girls cross country, boys basketball, girls basketball, wrestling, girls indoor track, boys indoor track, boys ice hockey, boys swim, and girls swim teams for our present board. Several of our students were accepted to the prestigious 2019 Massachusetts All-State Music Festival. They joined other top student musicians from across the state to prepare and present a concert at Symphony Hall in Boston on March 2nd. We had Anna Tunis, grade 10, who, do you remember for this year? Is that this year or last year? Like French horn for us? Is that this year?
Last year. Last year.
So she was selected for a French horn. Aya Oreski, who's a junior, who's a soprano in the mixed chorus. Sarah Slager, a senior soprano in the mixed chorus. Stephanie Northrup, junior, alto in the mixed chorus. And Ava O'Connor, sophomore, alto in the mixed chorus. We recently had a guest director, Emily Isaacson, was here from Handel &amp; Bead, the music society of Boston. Couple of other schools joined us, and our students were treated to an experience with her, and they practiced and rehearsed a bunch of different songs, and then they had an opportunity to perform at the Boston Symphony. So it's part of their youth outreach program that they do, and would need to be a little horses this year, and we all got to be treated to the show as well. The Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, or MEPG, was brought back to life at the high school this year. Students at Silver Lake participated in this competition, used to be known as the Boston Globe Fest years ago, it's been over decades since we competed. But Ms. Ferreira and Ms. Orca volunteered this year. It's quite a prestigious competition. It's very difficult for schools to be able to move on. They kind of did it this year, knowing like, all right, this is our first year doing it, it's really just for the experience, they weren't anticipating on moving on or getting anything, and yet, four of our students won awards. We have three lead after awards, Quinn Boneman, John Cody, and Caitlin Beckwith, and Shelby Philbeck-Lone, a set designer. So pretty amazing. It was all student-driven, volunteer-driven. The show is called Boxes. They actually did an in-school performance today, really just focused on high school students and sort of pressures that are put on them, and how to kind of be yourself amongst all the pressure of outside influence. So I would like to congratulate all of them. We just wrapped up two back-to-back lecture lectures last week and this week. We had a representative from the Caren program who came and spoke to our parents about babying last week. She was very informed of lots of neat information, stuff that we ourselves didn't even know or were aware of. I think we had just as many parents as teachers in attendance, which was, you know, good to know that there's so many people that are trying to go to more about this. We had lots of resources that she left behind. We have lots of resources that she left behind, presented behind for us, a shared with parents. We put them out of parent conference night too and they're available, both of them stopped out of the office. And then on Tuesday night of this week, we had ANX, which is the documentary on anxiety. And again, that was opened up to the community, both of these events were PTO, so I'd like to thank them. We are working with the CAREN program to bring a student presentation as well on babying. Unfortunately, they are both solid this year. But we are first of all, unless the students, they open up, start with a wall to be able to bring her back here, so. She is also working on creating a diversion program, a cessation program that is online that will be available to students to help students who are addicted to the nicotine and babies to help them to try to stop. That's something that we need to support to be able to support them. And lastly, all of our staff are now trained in the Stop the Bleed program. Thanks to Kristen Lee, who's able to ride a gr- oh, these grader riders are over here. We now have a kit available for every classroom and space in the building. So we have 92 altogether that were ordered and then we have one big kit that would go in a common area that is available as well. So that's it.
It's great news to know that so many people are pulling in the same direction, looking for dollars in non-traditional ways. I can't tell you how much it lets me breathe a sigh of relief knowing hopefully we will never need what we have, the Stop the Bleed kits. And I know it was somebody from your own committee, so you might want to publicly thank again.
Yeah, Mike Gallagher.
Mike Gallagher, who's a school committee member for Kingston School Committee, has brought this to the district, brought it to all of our schools and educated us all on the importance of having tourniquets in case we do have any incident where some student has a limb injury and it can save lives. So thank you very much to Mike for that, appreciate it.
All right, I understand that.
Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
Jim.
So on Tuesday, March 5th, we met our 36th parents organization. That's our, who are six, who are six grade parents that are coming up. This really is a part of our transition, our organization process. So we had a little junior, some parents that came through, some of their kids. And kind of talking about the school, the activities, the curriculum, and things that we have planned for their children next year. It seems great to talk about next year and we're still planning the end of this year, but that's what happened at school, so we started planning that transition. But it was a great night, it was very informative. We had a lot of parents that came down half year after, had some conversations with us, so we're excited about that. This week is our spirit week, which leads into March Madness. March Madness is our second biggest event of the year. So we have somewhere around 350 to 400 students that will show up for March Madness. Just somewhere around 75 to 80% of our entire school student body will come to this event. We have somewhere around 25, 30 staff members that will come to the event as well. Then it leads off with a basketball game between staff and students. And then we have multiple events after that. We have dance in the cafeteria, we have we dance, the pep sport library, we have photo booth for the kids in the lobby. We also have karaoke set up for kids in the lobby. And then this year, one of the things we added was a gaming system to the encore. And so we have Super Smash Brothers tournament. The kids are already signed up for it and very excited about it. And one of the things that school council tells us, that they've worked very hard with me on, is how do we get the other 20% to come to our events and be a part of that meaningful experience? And you know, so we try to take feedback and try to, from that feedback, we try to make things that are created to involve everybody. That's what we want for our schools and for our students. So this is something new that we're trying, we're hoping that it's an avenue to reach out and connect students to our events. So I will bring back some information at the next meeting, but that's tomorrow night. And we would like to, as always, you guys are welcome to stop by, that's a great event. I also want to talk about something that Superintendent Blackwood, along with our cafeteria director, they am. I think I will say that, right?
Thank you.
They've been working really hard with me on bringing breakfast back to our school for students that really need that opportunity at the middle school. And it's something that we picked off this week. And a lot of coordination, a lot of support, communication, it's off and running. And it's been very, very, obviously, I feel like, I know we like students, but obviously, I have staff and all this to be for something like that. And for the parents and our cafeteria director. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I did put that in the newsletter. You guys should review it at your own time, but.
You put some good pictures in that newsletter.
Yeah, the bananas, the practice, the bananas.
Can you just reiterate for the school committee, exactly what time does your school start?
So our school start time is 7:00 o'clock, so they'll come at 7:05. Another thing we did is we opened up the cafeteria doors so the kids can come right in. And in the morning, we have grab shelves so they can come grab, they can sit down. We take attendance for them in the cafeteria. So with a set of 20 bell rings, which is their time to move to class, their attendance to take, the information they need is submitted there. And we moved our morning duties around so we have two teachers now in this cafeteria. One taking attendance from the kids, we have cafeteria workers that ship the rations around so they can accommodate, facilitate that with no extra cost to the district. And the third thing we did was post a person at the door so that they can actually cafeteria stay. So there's a lot of open parts in that to make sure that things run smoothly, especially in the concept they do. But I'm glad to report that it has been very smooth. I've gone down there on a few occasions, talked to the kids. They're very positive, very excited, we're all down there, using that kind of.
As a committee that's acknowledged the research, the brain-based research of how detrimental it is to have school start times so early for our adolescent brains. Anything you can do to help feed their bodies and get them ready for the day and welcome them, you know, with those good smells and nice treats. We really appreciate the efforts that you're putting into that.
It is a jumpstart, it's like that energy push to them. So we are excited about that. And it's something that we've piloted in the past or had some experience with how to make that flow happen. So we are going to continue with this program and our hope is to continue with it forward too. So we're very excited about that. Lastly, I'll just quickly mention is the student handbook. So this is the student handbook, they are derived from that from our parents, from our staff. We reviewed it at our school council, our school council then approved it and then moved it to school. Obviously, it's not something that we can afford tonight. I highlighted in yellow the changes we asked to review and something that we'll talk about next time. Obviously, there are policy changes that happen through the school committee that get added to our student handbook. But these are the changes that derive from the internal bankers' home council. So I bring in those to you guys, bring it to you.
Great, thank you, Jim. And the school committee that might be interested in learning more about school start times, MASC Division 2, which is located in central Massachusetts, is hosting on April 6th, a conversation, that's a Saturday, a conversation about school start times, different strategies, different districts have looked at, and both problems and benefits of adjusting school start times. So again, even though it's not our division, you're all welcome to sign up and attend if you're interested. All right. Moving on to our Director of Business Services, Christine with the financial report.
We're 2000 in the middle of the year and we're doing okay. It's been a medical year.
Pretty okay.
We've just had some, we've had some food issues. Jax, I guess it's a good, it's a funny. It happens, we just have to have a plan of place to make the work, that's, that's, we need to fix it, make the work. As you can, if you look at the data, you can see there are many small deficits and most of those could be zero in the category. For me, there are a couple areas that are red flagged, one of them is homeless transportation. Right now, with the high school deficit of $34,000, announced through February, and that will continue. One thing I do want to bring to your attention though is we do receive some reimbursement on an annual basis from the state for homeless transportation. We receive that in the following year. So it's based on information I submitted in here and what we receive in the following year. And at that point, it just goes back to the general fund. So this deficit is what's happening this year, what's happened so far. The other area, we're starting some problems with the maintenance area. And one of the biggest contributors to that is the hot water tanks, the purchase of and installation of those. But we're always working at keeping our facility running smoothly and trying to be proactive, all those things that we need to take care of. Even where as proactive as we can, the items do pop up and we try to, we do the best we can to take care of those. As I mentioned, the maintenance is taking quite a hit this year with the current deficit being $57,000. And we're putting a real effort towards within our capital plan also to fill some of those other areas that need to be taken care of. With the financial, we're, I always look at the financial to see if there are some adjustments or updates that we can make. And I do believe we'll be making some updates with our utilities because this year has been much better than last year. So we'll be taking a look at that to see where we stand for the end of the year. But those deficits will stand, that's as of right now. So I just wanted to bring your attention, if you have any questions, please let me know.
So Christine, do we have any lines that have a surplus where we may be able to do some transfers as we get towards the end of the year to cover the deficits in the two lines you mentioned?
Right, we can do that. What we've tried to do is working through our financial now, projecting payroll to see where we're going to be and see what else has to happen and try to uncover for all those events that we're aware of. So usually at our close-up, we do present a cover sheet on those areas where there are surpluses that could take care of the deficits.
Great. And if we didn't have surpluses in those areas, would that be something that we could use our excess and deficiency funds for?
Traditionally, that's only been used for emergency type events. My expectation is if we were going to put the position to do that, we would already be aware of that.
Great.
Where, I'm at that position, we're at that position.
Fantastic. It's good to know we're in your capable hands, thank you very much. Any questions for Christine?
So there's several questions. I was just looking at, I was on that, the athletic service line. What is that line, what's in that line?
Some of it can be supplies, some of the costs to run the athletic program are split between some items that are carried by the budget, some are carried by the revolving account. It can be those types, it can be uniforms, it can be officiating fees. There's a lot that goes on to maintain the athletic programs.
Okay, so that's, yeah.
And some of it is in the budget.
I'm asking the question because I help out with my son's hockey and ice times. The cost is increasing coming up this year, it's the first time in three years. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, I'm sure you are.
That is a significant item for athletics and that is for the cost that is borne between the budget and the revolving account that's raised using user fees, so.
I was just curious if that's the line is going.
It would, yes.
So if they made adjustments to it next year, it's going up there?
I do not know if they put an increase in for that, but they seem to be pretty on top of.
Martha did account for the rise in some of the costs for next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to worry about.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Christine? All right, thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Moving on to our Assistant Superintendent, Jill.
So the Department of Education is releasing English language proficiency benchmarks. The goal is for students to be proficient in English language learning within six years. The state is requiring that schools take several steps. Once they have these targets for students, or students who are not meeting the targets, they need to create a plan. The state does provide a template that our teachers and support teams can use to complete them. And they're, they must involve not only the English language teacher, but the students' teachers, and also include parent input. And so the schools, I've spoken with both of our EL teachers as well as with our principals to make them aware of this change. And they have begun to think about how they're going to address that. All of our schools have support teams and so including Lana and Cheryl, our EL teachers in that process will be helpful in facilitating that kind of conversation and putting together a plan with interventions for students who may be struggling to help all children become proficient within six years of English language support. The 2018 report cards were distributed electronically to all families in February. The state put out an electronic report card, which requires that you touch certain areas in order to see more information, which was confusing at first to people because it was a new look and it was a new design. Also, the state, it wasn't a printer friendly version. And so the state told us that they would be working on a printer friendly version for families who do not have access. So that's something that I have not seen an update for, but as soon as it is available, we will make those available to our schools as well. One of the new pieces of data accessible on the report card is MasCor completion for high school students. And I've included some information as to what MasCor is. It is the state recommended program of studies that the state believes will create students who are college and career ready. And what I have provided you with there is a snapshot of the data from 2017, 18. And in the far right corner, you can see the percentage of students who completed MasCor. All of our students, that was about 97.5%. Now, in order to be considered 100% completed, students have to take four units of English, four units of math, three units of a lab-based science, three units of history, two units of the same foreign language, and one unit of the arts, and then five additional core courses. So that's what MasCor currently is.
Jill, can you keep that handy for when we get to the discussion about graduation requirements?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And the other thing, I wanted to thank John Garofalo and Buffy Hines. Also, as part of the Look Act, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education provided us regulations that describe an opportunity for students to receive a seal of biliteracy on their diploma. And so there are requirements and there are minimal test boards that have to be met in order for a student to achieve this. So the guidance department will be reaching out to students who meet those minimal requirements and then the students would need to take a test in order to, in addition to their MCAS scores, they would also need to take a test in that language in order to achieve the seal. But it is an opportunity that some of our students may be able to take advantage of and added opportunity. The program is completely voluntary for districts and also completely voluntary for students. It's just an option that students may have and certainly a valuable skill to be literate in a language. And that's it for now.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Well, how many students do we have that are not proficient in the English language of the district areas?
So in terms of ELs, for ELs, we have about.
Do we have enough of the sub-population to discuss?
We don't have enough for any. Oh, in order to discuss this, yes.
Okay, just making sure. There's certain.
I mentioned with MCAS.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to, just making sure. No, there's just certain regulations about how big a population of students has to be if we're going to discuss it publicly. I was just making sure before we had that conversation. We're okay.
Yeah, so district-wide, we have about 40 students who are in need of support.
Four or 40?
Forty, across the district. And that, those are students that we monitor and continue to monitor and some of them require more direct services where they actually meet with the EL teachers, so. It's about 40 until. Very dangerous.
K-12.
K-12.
Any other questions for our Assistant Superintendent? Great report, Jill, thank you very much. On to our Superintendent, Joy.
Thank you. So last month, we presented the assessment presentation and we presented version two of the budget. Since that time, we have heard from the Kingston Finance Committee that they are supportive of our budget, both the Finance Committee, the Selectman and the County Administrator. I don't think I'm out of line, that's okay?
Correct.
Correct. So Kingston is fully supportive. We have met with the Plimpton Finance Committee, we have not heard back from them yet. I did not have a sense that there was any serious concerns about the budget at all.
No, there was no concerns about the budget as presented. Their only concern came in the area of the assessment to Plimpton, but that has to do with the state formulation, not our budget.
Exactly. And then on Monday, we met with Halifax Finance Committee, with Fred, and I. And then on Monday, we met with Halifax Finance Committee with Fred, and I believe they have not finished their assessment of their...
Yeah, we started yesterday to check off some of the line items, but we're expecting to finish that up next week.
So hopefully soon we'll have some good news. So at this point in time, if no one had, if anyone had some questions, we could talk about the budget, or we could take a vote on the budget as presented.
Any discussion about the budget?
Just want to comment about the budget. The assessments are ongoing by about six hundred thousand, but our total expected is eight hundred thousand, so looking forward over the next year or two, if we grow that eight hundred number for expected assessments over the next year.
Great. Thank you very much for that. You know, some people have asked me about local contributions and why the assessments vary so differently. According to the Foundation Budget Formula, our local contributions this year estimated for FY20, Kingston's looking at about sixty-four percent is their responsibility under Foundation. Halifax is looking at about fifty-four percent responsibility locally under Foundation, and Plimpton is looking at about seventy-four percent locally as their contribution to Foundation budget. So that's why there's some discrepancies. It's because our towns are in different places according to the metrics used by the Department of Revenue and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I would just like to commend this budget and Joy and her team for putting together a level service budget. Our earliest meeting was back in the fall in Kingston, and that was the guidance we were given. We were asked to try and meet them at a reasonable budget request in level service, and that's what we believe we've delivered in this budget here tonight that we're being asked to vote on. If there is no other comments, questions, or discussion from the committee on the budget, I would entertain any motions to approve the budget.
Jason, should we talk about the warrant article so that everyone...
Let's maybe one second.
Apples.
That was my plan. All right. Thank you.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the 2019-2020 operating budget of twenty-five million, nine-nine-two-three-three-four as the amount deemed necessary for the operation of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, and thank you for that because we have a couple of members missing tonight. And as Mr. Creed would remind me, and if he didn't, I'm sure my awesome secretary would, that we need eleven votes, and I believe that we do meet that threshold, correct?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Lisa. Lisa keeps me honest. All right, Paula, if you'd like to move on to the next item.
Motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of seven-hundred-eighty-three-thousand dollars of community funds to fund the 2019-2020 fiscal year capital plan.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Okay, lastly, motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the 2019-2020 construction budget of one million, five-hundred-thirteen-thousand, two-hundred-seventeen dollars and fifty cents as the amount deemed necessary for the construction costs of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A unanimous vote. And thank you very much, Paula, for reading those. It was a nice turn of events.
I'm glad we talked about that.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have our budgets. Thank you very much again for that and all the work that goes into it. Joy?
Thank you.
Back to you.
Okay, excellent. I did just want to point out one thing. On the capital plan, there was just one word change, and I apologize. It was my error when we had put the capital plan single-page together. And I didn't have it. Oh, thank you so much. Under the wastewater treatment plant, I had accidentally left the word evaluating wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plan evaluation. The evaluation is helping us decide what items are being fixed in the wastewater treatment plant. So your last copy had the word evaluating on the top line. I put it in as part of the verbiage. So that was my mistake. The first one went out. So this one is corrected, and this is the one that would be going forward. And again, this is not added just for Finance Committee members' information. This is not part of the budget. We are funding this out of E and D. We will continue to do that for as long as we are capable of doing that because it is not adding to the budget. My understanding is the towns are appreciative of us not adding to the budget. So we will continue to be self-sufficient for as long as we are able. And we believe this capital plan addresses the concerns that we have. The only other thing on the budget that I wanted to mention, as you know, we have talked, well, basically for the last several years, about safety and security of the schools. And you may remember, in September, we recognized the town of Kingston for fully supporting a school resource officer. We had Elaine and our school resource officer. We had them come in, and we recognized them and gave them a plaque. For three years prior to that, the town of Kingston funded a part-time school resource officer, Officer Marshall. He was wonderful. He was here .5 for three years, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, or four? Four. Four. He was here four years. Excuse me. He was here for four years. How time flies. This year, the town of Kingston was kind enough to fund a full-time school resource officer. That officer is fully funded through the Kingston Police Department budget. It is not at all part of our budget. The town of Kingston has, that officer helps students, obviously, from Plimpton and Halifax and think that is needed. It is not just Kingston children who are served by this officer. So one of the things that we had hoped and still hope to do is to provide more supports to the middle school. My goal in life is always to be proactive and to help children to make the best choices possible. In the middle school, it's a time that a lot happens, and some children really sort of stay the course, and some children are beginning to make some choices that aren't the best choices. So my goal is to provide some supports into the middle school. We have found that the full-time resource officer is housed at the high school and goes over to the middle school as needed and tries to make an appearance, but it is very difficult. There's a lot going on at the high school. I very much would love, and I believe Mr. Pia would love, for us to have a school resource officer that is at the middle school. Because of the current situation, our goal had been to try as a .5 to start the program. You know, we've had some of these conversations. In my meetings with the police chiefs, I have come to understand that because we are within the town of Kingston property, it is within the town of Kingston's jurisdiction. It needs to be a town of Kingston police officer. If the town were to hire an additional police officer, that's a whole different funding level. So what the police, and again, we have monthly meetings, their suggestion was to put in a .5 officer as Frank Marshall, the person that was here for four years, with the same type of system. That person was here on overtime. So he was a full-time police officer, and then the position was funded as overtime because that way they're not adding a police officer to the force. So that's how we had it for four years. It worked great. Everybody was happy. It was a very successful thing. I believe the town of Kingston has really gone above and beyond financially to support our schools in terms of the safety and security of our students. And my goal was to go to the towns of Halifax and Kingston, excuse me, wrong towns, Halifax and Plimpton, to see if they would fund a .5 officer between the two towns. So I have put on a warrant article for Halifax and for Plimpton for those positions. So at this point, that's where we're at. I've reached out to the police chiefs in all three towns, and I'm in the process of trying to schedule a meeting with the Finance Committee so they can sort of explain the information about this and why this approach makes some sense. There's been some questions why it was not put into our budget. There's a lot of reasons why, but the long and the short of it is it's only for Halifax and Plimpton. So I don't have a mechanism to charge separately Halifax and Plimpton a different amount than we pay currently. I do not want to charge Kingston anything additional in the budget. They're already fully funding a police officer. So in Halifax...
And if we put it into the budget, to be fair, we would stop having Kingston pay for their 1.0 full-time officer. We would put 1.5 full-time equivalent into our budget, and then we would split it amongst the towns according to their population assessment. So we wouldn't do that. I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
So it is a complex situation. Because we're a region, everything is harder. I mean, it just is. I mean, it's just, everything is harder. Most schools, from my understanding, the police is separate, like it is not part of the school budget. That seems to be the most common. It's part of the police department's budget, is having a school resource officer. Because again, we're not year-round, right? So what does the officer do when you're not in session? They become that town's officer. So, you know, in so many levels, you know, in school vacation week, all those things, they become part of the town's force. So this is something that is sort of going to be ongoing. The warrant articles are in, have been properly filed. You know, we have met with Plimpton. Plimpton seems supportive of the concept. We've met with the Finance and Selectmen on it. I think they're supportive of the concept. Halifax, I think, has some ongoing questions and concerns. So the hope is to have a meeting with the three police chiefs, and I will invite Finance and Selectmen from all three towns who are interested in coming if they have additional questions, and I will send out an invitation for you. So just to let you know, that's where I'm at currently.
Good summary.
But again, my goal always is to be proactive, to provide the supports necessary for the school, and if God forbid anything happens, my preference would be to have a police officer onboard.
I think, to be fair, I think some of the conversations, and please feel free to jump in if you have a difference of opinion, I don't think that the consideration about having a .5 police officer at Silver Lake Middle School was really the bait. I think everyone in the room understood that that is not a bad thing to be asking for in today's day and age. It was the mechanism. We've gone through, working with legal counsel here, to make sure that this was an appropriate vehicle. We understand it's unorthodox, so we're looking forward to working with the towns to make sure we can facilitate, which everyone seems to agree, is a good, common-sense approach to the safety of our campus here.
One idea that just came to me is, is it possible to put that share cost? To do a...
Share cost is for the elementaries. We're sharing our overhead costs with the elementaries.
Okay. It was just...
Created though.
Just an idea.
We are open to any good ideas.
You were there on Monday. I can tell you right now, just like whether or not we're on board or not.
I'm sorry, say it again, Fred?
We're not on board right now.
Okay.
I mean, we support the resource officer because we support the mechanism of a warrant article every single year.
Right.
It says, we used to have a resource officer a long time ago. Finally, we're going to drop it. We can have more of it back then as part of the operational budget. The consensus is, why can't you do what you're doing? Again, we support the resource officer. We do not support the mechanism.
Exactly, exactly. And I have the same recollection of the meeting.
Yeah. So my question is, if we put it into the budget, Kingston's contribution now will go down, Halifax and Plimpton would go up because right now you're asking Halifax and Plimpton to share half of an officer, and Kingston pays one. If we put it into the budget and Kingston pays .55, that's, they'll go down from one to .7, and then Halifax and Plimpton shares the rest, so they'll pay more under putting it into the operational budget than they would under the warrant articles.
Well, so what would be putting the 1.5 in?
Right, so Kingston pays one right now, but they'll pay less.
Yes.
Under putting it in operation, they'll only pay .75 instead of one. So they save money. Kingston saves money, Halifax and Plimpton goes up over the way that they did this.
But halftime would still be an overtime officer.
At this point in time, that is my understanding. Yeah.
I'm paying overtime officer, so...
Because you can't hire half a police officer. I think that's the problem.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's just...
It's how it was funded here for four years.
The other option is to hire a full-time, so you have two full-time school resource officers.
At regular pay.
At regular pay, then Kingston pays one, and then Halifax and Plimpton share the other one, which is roughly what Kingston's paying now.
And again, just to make sure we're covering ourselves in the verbiage, we did recently have a safety audit of the campus. This doesn't just come from our wants and our desires. This was recommended to us by experts in the field. Fire chiefs, police chiefs came together and put their heads together, and this was one of the recommendations for us moving forward. Any other questions or comments about the article?
I do have a question. So if this doesn't move forward with the warrant articles in those two towns, it's too late to put it back into the operational budget. Or, well, we would have to then make amendments at each of our town meetings to change the budget for next year.
Unless it was re-voted prior to...
Say that again.
We would have to vote to change budget if it failed. So basically, you have to have everyone at the town meetings in case you needed to vote a different number.
Yeah, it would be a complicated process, but there is a mechanism.
You go without the Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation.
Right.
And then there was the, this is a safety issue, the public wanted to say, the heck with them, just do it anyway. I can't tell you what the people are going to do.
Right.
I can tell you right now. It's only the mechanism that's causing the problem.
So it could be a one-year thing, and then next year, we put it into the budget, fully into the budget the following year, and then it doesn't go through the warrant articles year after year?
Yeah, I think that's probably the problem. A warrant article isn't designed to do that, I mean, year-over-year, basically. But that's one thing.
Except for the fact that the way that Halifax funds the conservation department, we do that as part of our review, so.
But just, again, if it does pass, considering the concerns and the willingness to work and come to a solution that would still come to the same ends, then I will make that commitment right now that if the articles do pass and we do have that resource officer, we will still work with all of the communities to come to a more agreeable mechanism in the future.
Right to...
Please do. And I, my word is my word.
I know, Jason.
Thank you.
Right. I mean, and to Jason's point, our goal is to provide safety for the students. I'm definitely open for a mechanism. This was the only one that we were able to come up with at this time to fund it. So, you know, it's basically an intermunicipal agreement, and that was, you know, whether or not the, it has to be a warrant article or not, but that was actually the language that I think Charlie had given me, so.
Yes.
If one of the two towns approve at town meeting, but it doesn't, we then get one in a quarter?
We would get whatever amount it could fund, yes.
One?
Yep.
One plus?
Yep, it would still be something. Right, right. As I said, I think Plimpton at this point seems amenable.
Yeah, okay.
So it could be a little...
One plus.
One plus.
I don't want to say that we don't have an opportunity here to get all the towns to vote for it, and there's a chance that all the towns might say this just doesn't feel right to them, and that's because we didn't do our job at town meeting to explain it, and we didn't do our job prior to town meeting to explain it.
That is another part of it, where those depend on one another.
Absolutely. So it's not like our budget, so one town can vote their portion, and we would fund that amount of an officer. And that is some of the latitude we get by having a currently existing officer just picking up some extra hours.
Because their benefits are already paid for under their regular hours, so it's not like bringing in a full-time person plus all the benefits.
Exactly, exactly. Okay.
So Jason, on this, when Joy schedules that meeting, should we just make sure we have an agenda item to update?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Boyd. Any other further discussion about the budget?
A couple, do you mind?
You want to talk about the technology? You want to talk about the technology?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So there are, there's an updated for, section four, in your packet, from Steve Pello. As you know, we did a little bit of fine-tuning. So this is the final version, which goes through the middle school and the high school. So if you wish, you can pull out the first one and put this in, or just put it on top, whichever you prefer.
And this was included in the budget we voted tonight. These are some of the modifications that Stephen made.
And then, this is the high school textbook inventory. You may remember, we had the middle school textbook inventory, but the high school was sort of finishing theirs up, so theirs is now finished. So you could add that into section four also. And then, I have two other things. I'm having too much paper here. Jason was kind enough to forward a grant, which was forwarded to him from Vinnie DiMascio, on safer schools and communities initiative, and it's a local equipment and technology grant opportunity. So I reached out to Mos Flain and Mark Douglas, because this would be through the town of Kingston, because it's based on the town you reside in, to begin to look at it, and they agreed that they can't imagine that they would like to do anything more than to sit with me and fill out the grant. I'm sorry. So, we will, we're gonna work on getting this in. It's due April 3rd. So, it is fairly detailed, and it is some language that I have to admit, I'm not even sure what it means, but hopefully between the three of us, I will come to understand exactly what it all is. The interesting thing about it is you have to add up all three, because we're a region, we add up the population of all three towns. So we're considered large. So we are eligible for $80,000. So I have no idea if we'll be able to dot the i's and cross the t's, but between the three of us, I think we're all reasonably intelligent. I'm sure we'll get it in, and hope for the best.
It's been, and I was gonna mention this later on in my report, it's been an amazing opportunity to become friends with Senator DiMascio. And I don't mean that personally. I mean as the representative of Silver Lake Schools. He is a true friend of the Silver Lake Schools. He reached out to me the day this grant came due. It was probably before it had been disseminated to the general public. He's offered to write a letter of support to put into the application for that grant. And there's not a time where I send an email, I pick up the phone, even a text, that I don't hear back from Senator DiMascio rapidly asking what he can do to help out with the problem. So, I'd like to thank Senator DiMascio for all of his efforts, especially this cooperative work towards what we were just discussing, trying to make our schools the safest possible schools they can be. I have some more information about how he's continuing that in my chairman's report as well.
And somehow amid all the paper I have, and I must apologize, because I know it's here somewhere, the special ed director, special ed department head, nope, special ed department head, Michelle Pedro, was reviewing some of the textbooks that were rather outdated, and technically, we have to ask for them to be disposed of. Lisa put together a beautiful list of a very lengthy list, which I apparently have since eaten in all this paperwork in front of me. My apologies. But there's about 120 odds and ends, some paperbacks that were very old and tattered, that we have in our closets throughout the high school. And we would love to be able to, with your permission-
Do you want a digital version?
Sure, thank you.
So is this where you're asking us to donate them? Because we use school committee funds to buy them?
Exactly. So most of these are paperbacks that there's one or two copies of, and that's why the page is probably, oh, 26 pages long. She did a really nice job of listing it all. She took me very literally when I said I needed a list. I didn't quite mean this, exactly. A little bit bad, and it's very time-consuming. But there's one or two of many books that we no longer use, and they're taking up space, and I would love your permission for, to allow us to donate, destroy.
So again, since these were bought with school funds, this is the proper mechanism to get rid of materials that are too old. Sometimes they do get tossed.
Yep.
And that's fine when they're smaller items, but when you have a number this big, and it was the dollars and cents from our towns, it's only right for us to authorize their disposal or donation. So, do I have a motion to donate or dispose of the paperback and hardcover books, I'm sure?
Yeah, there's probably some in here.
Do I have a motion to accept the disposal of the books that we no longer need in this list? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just ask, sort of what, what do they include? Are they in a, can they be donated?
Some of them will actually, will legitimately be donated, yes. And we did it a couple of years ago. Yeah, we did it a couple of years ago, too. We donated books to, after like, major hurricanes, books had been donated. So some will legitimately be donated. Some are growing mold, so we'd like to throw those out. Yep, we don't want those. But yeah, when we can donate them, we absolutely will, yep.
Great.
Or recycle.
Any other questions? All those in favor? All right, you can donate and dispose of those books, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I apologize. Oh, there it is! Found it! Knew there was one more place I hadn't looked. Sorry about that.
Any other information for us tonight, Joy?
All right, thanks. I think I wanted to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to new business, and I will hand over the meeting to Eric.
Thank you. So, the title here is Location Marijuana Shops Resolution. So as I began to discuss last month, as everybody probably knows, at the town meeting last year in Kingston, they approved some zoning and retail marijuana shops in the town of Kingston. There's a lot of ruh-rah about that, because the way, the mechanism that, where the vote happened, there were folks who were trying to ban it altogether. There was a lot of confusion, the way that the votes happened. So there's quite a few people with warrant articles going up for this year's town meeting. Including, one would be another ban, and put that up to a vote again, to ban the retail. And again, the ban only lasts, it's a year. Then there's another article that would, what they passed last year was, it could be in a commercial area, it had to be a minimum 1,000 feet from a school or another location where children congregate and have activities. That's pretty broadly, bus stops was one of those areas where they were kind of saying, "Well, kids congregate." But the state came back and said, "Yeah, that's temporary, you know, that's not really where they congregate and have scheduled activities." So, the issue is, they're trying to move it from 1,000 feet down to 500 feet, specifically because the abandoned Burger King in Kingston is 920 feet from the Kingston Elementary School. So if they go down 500 feet, then they can use that abandoned Burger King right next to the highway, and across from Mamma Mia's and Dunkin' Donuts and all that. And then the other locations are also down in the southern area of Kingston on 3A there. So there's a group that's trying to change it from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. There's a group that's trying to ban it again. And then there's also going to be a warrant article to allow industrial, which would put it over by the wind turbine, the train station, that area. But I still think that's kind of close to a school, so I think they'd have to cut it down to 500 feet for that to pass as well. My point is, I've been against this. I'm very vocal against having retail marijuana in Kingston. I know it's legal in the state, and there's no turning back from that, but they're just so new in the state. We don't know what the long-term effects will be on our specific towns. The ones that have opened have not been opened that long. Where it's happened in California and Colorado, there's mixed results, but from my understanding, they're not positive. There was a study in California that looked at a series of towns along a highway stretch, and the towns where they actually had the retail marijuana shops, the usage in the high school and middle schools were higher than in those towns where they didn't have a shop. Kind of makes sense, it's just common sense. But see what happens with other towns. See what sort of negative effects, see whether there really is this pot of gold that comes to the town of funding that we will use to hire hundreds of teachers and plenty of police officers, that will never happen. So one of the things that I did at our Kingston Elementary School committee meeting on Monday was, we started to talk about this resolution, but we put it off a month to actually put together the resolution based on the warrant articles that are being presented once those are finalized. But here, what I would kind of ask you guys, or see if folks would be agreeable, is to actually put together a resolution tonight, because the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Committee over the next couple of weeks will be listening to these, reviewing these warrant articles, and they will be voting on whether they're supportive or not. I think it would carry a lot of weight if the Silver Lake School Committee, because nobody's asked, nobody's asked the schools, the school administration, the principals, or the school committees, what, how we feel about this, whether we're for it or against it. I think it would carry a lot of weight if we put together a resolution that said, just in general, that we are supportive of a ban, and again, it's a one-year ban, and that we are against reducing the distance between a school and a retail shop from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. So I don't think we have to specifically say which warrant articles, because they're still kind of in limbo. But if we just had this sort of generic resolution that, as I said, we're supporting a ban, a one-year ban, and against reducing the distance from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. So that's just my suggestion. Obviously, it's up to you guys. I don't know how everybody else feels.
And before anybody speaks, I just want to let you know some of the protocols here. There's nothing banning us from doing this. We're allowed to take positions on ballot initiatives at the state level, articles coming up at town meetings. So there's nothing precluding us from doing this in a legal way if we choose to go down this path. So, I'll open the floor to any discussion. Any questions for Eric at this point?
So, in Halifax, it's allowable in the industrial zone for retail shops, but not in the commercial zone, which basically pushes it out to the edge near East Bridgewater on 106, but there's a daycare in there, so that whole complex is out. And then the other spot is near the train station, which is industrial, but it's not developable because of the water issues there. The other spot is down on Route 105. That's the only other industrial spot that it could be. So there are warrant articles asking to rezone sections of 106. Basically, there's two lots on the other side of the power lines on 106 that they would like to see rezoned to industrial to meet that requirement of a retail shop in a commercial zone.
Can I ask a technical question? Why is it either 1,000 feet or 500? Is that like, consistent town-to-town? It's always a 500 increment, or?
I don't know the answer to that. I just know that, so the town of Kingston, this is all new. So again, this is, just bolsters my argument, why are we jumping on the bandwagon and trying to be first ones out here doing this? I mean, it didn't work well with us with the turbine that's by the transfer station. Trying to be the first at everything, doesn't work. Let the other towns figure it out. I think it was just the first couple of towns that did it decided, hey, okay, 1,000 sounds good. But they were, it was problematic, because they said, "Schools or where children congregate for scheduled activities," without a definition of that, and the state has come back saying with what their ideas are of what that means. So this is all still in limbo. It's all new, and that just bolsters my argument, why do we need to rush for this? You know, again, it's not us, it's the town. It's, everyone's seeing money. They're turning green and gold here, thinking that we're gonna get this pot of gold.
I think the Kingston distance to 1,000 is problematic when you take the places kids congregate, which are schools, daycares, libraries, suck, and you come down to 3A section of Kingston, and most of it seems to sort of fall into one of those places, the daycares we have. So, in essence, the locations available are down the south side of Kingston, right on 3A, which, you know, if it's not the Burger King, and you get towards the Nook in this lane, it's half residential. I mean, it is. So that's where we're getting a lot of pushback in Kingston. Zoning-wise, is how to make it work.
They've purchased three, three retail establishments.
The other industrial, I think, is on the Duck Spray line by UPS. I think that spot fits, I think. I don't know how close it keeps.
For industrial or for commercial?
For industrial. Like, that opens up a section back in there, which is way back.
Yeah, but there's preschool right up there, there's-
Pipe, pipe.
Yeah, still within the-
I don't know how words you tell a town mind, but most of it, we can put something up in there, because it can go so far back. And this land is a developable part.
So you just have the retail stores, so where's the Grove?
Not Kingston.
No, I thought, I could be mistaken, but I thought they have to go to store in the town. The Grove has to come in the same area.
Gordon, you can have the floor.
No, it doesn't have to be. Halifax is looking at Grove on River Street, but not to sell at that location. The other issue for zoning these shops is that they have to be so far away from an establishment that pours alcohol. So I don't think that Burger King would even fit. There's a liquor store right next to it, Mamma Mia's, and Carmella's are right there, so.
I think it's in our bylaw.
I believe it's a state law that says you have to be some feet away.
That hasn't come up, because they're still actively pursuing that burger.
So that was another issue. That was another issue that you might want to look into, because that was a state requirement. We were told that we couldn't change, that it had to be, I think it's, 500 feet from an establishment that pours alcohol.
So, I'm gonna refocus us.
Yeah.
Okay? Does this committee feel inclined, with Eric's evidence from California, which states that schools that have marijuana dispensaries and/or groves inside their town boundaries have a higher prevalence of usage in their high school? Does that make us inclined to support the one-year moratorium in Kingston? And does that also, or separately, would we like to entertain a vote on the 1,000 versus the 500-foot distance between a congregating space for children and a dispensary and/or Grove site?
And I'm pushing for both.
I'm aware, I know how you feel. You've done a great job articulating that. Go ahead, Gordon.
Could we ask the administration if they have a comment on this?
Feel free to decline or weigh in.
I think I've read similar research, anecdotally. I think just in terms of, if you take vape shops that have opened up nearby the schools, and you look at the rise in vape use in the schools, I think they go hand-in-hand, so. I'm equally concerned.
All right. So, I will entertain a motion for the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to support a moratorium in Kingston on any marijuana industry, dispensary, et cetera.
Why don't I make the motion?
Well, you can make the motion. I was just, I could say, so moved.
Okay, so, can I combine them together, or do you want two separate motions?
Is anybody opposed to the two different ideas at the table? Would anybody prefer them split? Okay, sure.
Okay, so I would make a motion that the Silver Lake School Committee would support a moratorium on marijuana- retail shop, probably, right? Within the town of Kingston, and that we would not support reducing the distance between a school and a retail shop from 1,000 feet, or just reducing it, period.
Do I have a second to the motion? Good.
Can I ask a question?
Any further discussion?
I know you said that the moratorium is a one-year moratorium. How about the setback? Like, climb under to 1,000, is that, like, if you say that, state of 1,000, that could then, someone could put a warrant article in next year to change it?
Yeah, so I guess, the way that they're doing this, they're gonna, they're gonna present the ban first, because if the ban passes, then all the other warrant articles are done. So if the ban passes, great. If it doesn't pass, then it's gonna move on. I just don't know the order of what's next. So I believe that what's next would, could be moving into industrial, or it could be the, reducing the distance from 1,000 to 500 feet. So let's just say that the ban fails, and it also, the moving it from 1,000 to 500 fails, next year they can do it again. They need signatures. You have to have a number of signatures to get it on the warrant.
But if it were moved to 500, that would be permanent unless changed?
Unless changed in another bylaw. But you grandfather in, anybody who, and I don't know the zoning laws, but anybody who's then been approved and they get- know the zoning laws, but anybody who's then been approved and they get the, there's agreements with the town to host, you know, the community agreement and going through the state licensing, once they're in, they're grandfathered in. That's why I think it's important to do it now, we have an opportunity. People keep saying, well, what about alcohol? Well, liquor stores are here, bars are here. Retail marijuana is not here right now. We have a chance now to, to do something. And again, it might, it's not going to be permanent, it's, let's wait and see what happens at other towns.
Paul.
Could I just, we talked about it being a one-year moratorium, could I just ask the motion to be amended to?
I didn't say one, one year in the, in the, in my motion, I did not say one year, I just said moratorium.
True. Do we want to add one year, clarify to one?
I don't, because if the motion then, if, well, I mean, you could, you could make that amendment to my motion, but I didn't put it in there specifically because I felt like the long, I'm just for a ban altogether. That's me. I believe that a moratorium can only last one year, but then we can do another moratorium next year.
And I'd like to make a comment now, too. I'm more inclined to support it based on your own arguments, if it is one year, because we cited as one of our reasons the lack of research and evidence. So the permanency of a ban would look to counteract our argument that we want more research.
That's fine, because we could do it again next year.
Would you like to amend?
Oh, my God, you don't want me to say the whole?
Nope, you could just say amend the moratorium to one year.
I would like to amend the motion to reference one-year moratorium.
Okay. So we'll vote the amendment first. If it passes, then we'll vote.
I'll second.
You'll second it? Thank you, good. Keeping me honest. Okay, any further discussion about the amendment?
I just have one comment, just maybe we're at a two-thirds vote for zoning.
No. But not for, not for us, right? Okay, good. So all those in favor of Paul's amendment to make the moratorium in our resolution state one year? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. So now we have a resolution, as proposed by Eric, for a one-year moratorium for any business related to marijuana in the town of Kingston, and not to decrease the distance away from where children congregate under the 1,000 that's currently in the bylaws. Okay, any further discussion?
I have just one comment. I think this is just relative to distance. I mean, this is going to get there's open at some point here. If kids want it, they're going to go five miles down the road. Where our hands are already open. So I'm somewhat hesitant in putting our nose somewhere where kids are smart enough they can get it anyways, you know, they'll drive 10 minutes, so I don't know. I'm torn on this one quite frankly.
I think that's where, when I was doing the research in California, they looked very specifically along the highway, the towns where, where they had the retail establishments and the towns they didn't, and there was a striking difference. I mean, again, it makes sense. Kids with McDonald's in it, in that town, they're eating McDonald's, the towns that have the Taco Bell, guess what? They're probably eating Taco Bell. You know, I mean, but if kids need to go, they're going to get it, there's no question. The parents are going to go get it, but if it's right there in your town, there's a better chance that the parents and older siblings are going to have it, it's going to be in the house, and I think that's probably how these kids are getting it anyways. It's not, they can't walk in the store and buy it. It's their parents, it's family members, it's.
It's like alcohol.
Right? Just like alcohol.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, it's unanimous.
Can we, they will be meeting with the planning board and the selectmen, can we write a letter?
We can, that was what Julie and I were just talking about. We can draft a letter, and Mike can sign it on behalf of the committee, and we can forward it along to the town.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Moving on to old business, school committee under student involvement. Had the opportunity to sit down with Michaela and her assistant principals, and we had a great conversation. I'm trying not to insert the school committee into the process under which we get our new member, hopefully in June. We talked about some methods that other school systems use. Some school systems just use the executive board of their current student government, and they also then become the advisory committee to the school committee, and they elect one of their members to sit with us as an ex officio non-voting member who does not have the privilege of executive session. There's some other schools that make five brand-new positions, and they expand opportunities for children to get more involved with student government. One of the discussions we had was potentially having a student from each of the grades, and then having one other student also involved to make the five students for the school committee advisory group. So I'm going to let Michaela fill us in on any of the new details as they come up, because again, I just wanted to respect the process of the high school, and they know their kids, they know what they need, and I appreciated your time on that.
Thank you. And unfortunately, Mr. Pena, who's our student council advisor, couldn't make the meeting that afternoon, but we did follow up with him, and we've talked at length, and he has spoken with the students as well, and so they like the idea of a representative from each of the four grades, and then the fifth member being the liaison who would come to the school committee meeting. So they're looking to include that in their upcoming elections, and so the idea is that we already have an established class representative position in each of the classes, and there are a couple for each of the grades. So one person from each class would have a dual role in terms of the advisory, as well as class representative, and then the fifth person would go specifically for the liaison role, if you will, who would attend the meeting. So they're excited, they're looking forward to it. I think they are really encouraged at the idea of having this experience, and their elections are planned for mid-May, so we'll know who the selective members are, and they'll be ready to go in June.
Right. So because we have our new schedule where we don't meet every single month, we don't actually have a meeting this year in month, at this June, we meet again in July after May, but I just wanted their elections to coincide with our elections. Traditionally, we've waited until after all three town meetings to have their elections to then reconvene as the new school committee, and that's when I wanted them to be able to join us as well. So they just have to amend some bylaws to make sure that verbiage is in there now, but it seems like the process is in extremely good hands, and I'm glad to hear that the kids are excited about it. I will be reaching out to Jim to make sure, as Gordon suggested, that we have some way of getting some of the feedback from the middle school kids in your current school council, so they can feel like they're part of the process, too, and when they get up to the high school, they can already, you know, kind of know some of those inner workings, too. So that was a great suggestion, Gordon. Jim and I will carve out some time to sit down and talk about it real quick. Any questions about the student involvement on the school committee?
So now we're going with one each grade rather than?
No. So the master general law states that they're supposed to have a subcommittee that I or a designee reports to or comes to every other month during the school year, so five times a month. I, I need to go, or a designee needs to go and meet with this group of five. They elect from their five, one person who will come and sit with us at all our school committee meetings. So it's just to make sure it's a two-way line of communication. They send their representative up here to talk to all of us, but we send one of our representatives down there to talk to all of them.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is there any way that the fifth alternating member is a member from the junior?
So again, like, right, like we were talking about last time, the master general law states high school students, but we can supersede regulations. So that's something that Jim and I will try and figure out. Again, there's the campus issue. We are at campus, but the schedules don't always coincide, so we would, we would have to find a time. Most likely, I'd probably have to go visit two schools, or we could figure out a creative solution to telecommute in, or, you know, 21st century skills could, could become involved in this. Thank you. But it definitely took to heart what you said about trying to involve the middle school as well. So we're moving on to graduation requirements, and, you know, just to keep things brief tonight, we're not going to get too deep into this, I want this to be an ongoing conversation. This really came up because Chris and I went to charting the course a few weeks back, and, you know, we were shocked to realize that the only graduation requirements that the state of Massachusetts has is PE and passing the MCAS. I was just absolutely blown away that that's statutorily the only thing a student needs to graduate in the state of Massachusetts. But we do have the right to supersede that, we have the right to create our own graduation requirements, so I just wanted to have a conversation about what are they? Do we feel comfortable with where they are? I want to be very, very careful about the impact it might have on diverse student populations. I don't want to put anybody in a situation where we would preclude them from graduating. I want this to be achievable and accessible to all of our students. So want to think about what our goal should be, you know, what do we have right now? And to the point of some of the information that Jill was talking about with Mass Core, we already have about 96% of our kids.
97.5.
97.5% of our kids, reaching that goal. Does that coincide with what we currently have as graduation requirements? Would that be something we would be comfortable adopting? What about that 2.5% that didn't make it? How do we capture those students? So I'll hand it over to anybody from the administration side who'd like to talk about it.
I'll take the first job, if that's okay. So we had a meeting within the last few weeks to talk about graduation requirements, and we have in our handbook, that is approved by the school committee, our graduation requirements, which mirror the common core requirements, except for two-year requirement for foreign language. We do not have that as a requirement. Part of the reason why that had not been a requirement is because of our CTE program. Sometimes our schedules preclude their ability to take foreign language. Oftentimes, they can make it work, but it is a little bit more difficult for them. Our CTE students who go on to colleges or plan to go on to colleges work the hardest to make sure to get that requirement, and I see Paul is smiling, because.
I'll leave this later.
Yeah, because it is required for colleges. So Michaela did a little bit of research, and I don't mean to put words in her mouth, but I think I've got this right. She checked around with other vocational schools, comprehensive high schools, and it seemed as if the comprehensive high schools in general, not all, but many of them do not have foreign language as a requirement because of the difficulty of the scheduling. So there are some that do have the requirement, the state waivers students from meeting that is a graduation requirement if they're in a CTE program. Am I doing so far? Okay, good. There was a wake-up meeting. So the state precludes, you know, it's, it's a waiver, it's an official waiver. So, you know, that is something, we then looked at the number of students who take foreign language, and if I'm remembering the math that was done, it would basically be about 10 more students that we would need to make sure to fit in that are not CTE students, from what we could figure out, which would be, we would be able to do that within the current classes that we have. It would not put anything over the max. The key, though, and this is where I guess we began to fall apart a little bit, well, there's many places, but one of the places was the waivers. It can get very, very complex on who's eligible for a waiver. So we looked at Middleborough has, like, students that can be waived, and it was really rather convoluted document. So, you know, it becomes.
So we would be creating red tape for our students, our families, and ourselves?
Yeah, so it becomes rather onerous on administration, is, is one piece of it.
And, and students and families.
And students and families, because they would have to apply to be waived.
Right, right. They actively have to waive.
Right, right.
And I would say specifically, it would impact our CTE students who are also of special education, who need a resource class, so that, that would, they would either have to not take a resource to take a foreign language, or we'd have to be writing the waiver to get them on it.
Right. Again, all CTE students are just eligible for a waiver, so I mean, that piece, but, you know, again, to Michaela's point, you know, we do have some special education students that it may become very onerous. So again, the waiver process would be somewhat onerous, red tape for both the families and for administration. There is something that I have always been interested in, I'm not sure if we'll be able to pull it off within the next year or two, but I would love to be able to offer sign language. It's certainly, it's a, it's a pet peeve of mine, I've always wanted to do that, that counts as a foreign language, and I think that is a fantastic option for our students, and I think there are many, many students who maybe would struggle with foreign language, but would absolutely love to learn sign language. It would meet the criteria. We don't have currently anyone trained, you know, there would be some work involved in that, but that is something that we will look at. Other than the two-year foreign language requirements, we need those, what is the comment, what is it? Mass Core, thank you. The Mass Core requirements. So other than that, we do meet the requirements, and we're very proud of all the offerings that we have.
Yeah, and I would say, too, and General Kay's last year, for those of you who weren't here for those conversations, we have shifted our scheduling around with wellness and CTE as well, so because of that, more CTE students are able to take foreign language if they choose.
Thank you, Brett.
So that, that's available to them. Where was it before?
So that, it's something that we're sort of having some internal conversations, and I think, you know, again, we always want our students to be held to a very high standard, but we want it to be achievable, and we want our students to be successful, and I think to Jason's point, we obviously want all of our students to achieve a graduation requirement. So even without the requirement, our numbers are very good. We've had some years where they haven't been as good, but, you know, it seems like we're, we're doing a better job, I think, of trying to make sure all of our students aren't falling through the cracks, so just to give you a little bit of an update.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Does a programming language count towards that as well?
No, that's a great question.
I don't think so.
Eric would certainly.
I'm just asking.
No, it's, it's two years of the same foreign language. So if a child started in Spanish but didn't like Spanish and switched to French, they would have to have two years of the same language.
The primary is, it has to be conversational language.
Right, right. The other piece that's, again, just sort of to finish the conversation, students who take foreign language in gym at the middle school in eighth grade, they will, they will complete year one if they achieve the appropriate grades and do well in the course. They'll start at the high school at year two, but they've only counted as taking one year of foreign language because the middle school doesn't count. So there's, there's a little bit of angst around making the change at this point. Good use of word. So, but, you know, it's, it's in process, and I, and it is something that I think we're trying to be forward-thinking.
Yeah, and we might also see a change in a, in a positive way, too, with the change in our math. Do you remember December, one of the course changes that Kevin Sawyer had presented? Algebra II at the CP level will now be offered junior year instead of senior year, so that's something that I think will help us in terms of our percentages as well.
And, and when necessary, for individual students, we can come up with basically an individualized student success plan.
Absolutely.
To help them along to get these numbers to stay as good as they are or better.
I think the main thing, and something that we discussed in the meeting as well, is that parents and students are aware of what taking or not taking the language may mean for their future decisions. So while a state college may, as long as you're in a CTE program, not have an issue with admissions for that reason, even a child might have a difficult time getting into a private school that does have that requirement. And so it's important for kids and families to know the, the reality of that, if they don't decide to take two years of a foreign language, and just making sure that that kind of information is out there for, for students and parents as, as soon as they enter the high school.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for that update. That was extremely informative, and I think we can check that one off the list. We covered our bases, but just wanted to make sure, after that came up in a public discussion at our last meeting, that we were all aware of what the graduation requirements here at Silver Lake are. They obviously exceed the state mandate for PE and passing the MCAS, and I am happy to hear our, our success rate with the Mass Core as well. So thank you very much. So moving on to reports of standing committees, SELA, Silver Lake Education Association. Okay, admin review.
Vibration to door 26. Probably that week. We have a debate with the Senate.
And then will you be reporting that information back to, to when we have the joint meeting on April 11th?
Yeah, we should, that's, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Same as, same as last year.
Sounds good. Thank you. CTE? Chris, you got any?
I got an update here from Elliot, really, what's really going on, if you recall, is the greenhouse. So they got some progress this week. They had a lot that was gone for a while, so they were digging, forms in, and the rate of work concrete wants to cooperate to get that moving. He does have a timeline with the end of construction and expects it to be done by the end of June.
Wow. Amazing. Great news. And again, another grant written by one of our staff members that really went a long way to preserving an extremely important CTE program here. I can't say enough about Elliot and his stewardship of this program.
Do you have anything else we had to open up for the K3 coming in?
And thank you for looping us in on that email. We really appreciate it. All right, so on to the chairman's report, and we already covered my thanks to Senator Dimasito for sending those grants ahead to us. I also got, a citizen from Halifax sent an email to join myself in regards to how we reimburse teachers for graduate courses. He has an interesting idea and suggestion for the negotiation team to consider paying for PDPs. PDPs are traditionally cheaper than graduate courses. Some teachers now apply, in his mind, for graduate course credit just so they can receive the reimbursement from the district as the contract is currently written. So it's just something, as we think about negotiations, is this a cost savings to us potentially for not having to pay for a graduate course if we're willing to pay for PDPs that are required for state licensure? This would be something that would have to be negotiated between ourselves and the bargaining unit. Ironically enough, in correspondence, I also have a letter from the Silver Lake Education Association that's requesting that we begin the process of contract negotiations. So I will pass on the correspondence I had with the citizen from Halifax directly to the negotiations subcommittee, so you can take that into consideration as you prepare our strategies moving forward. All right. To the legislative agent report. Next week, there's going to be a hearing at the State House on the current Chapter 70 budget proposals. There's one called House 70, that's the governor's proposal. There's also Senator Chang Diaz's proposal, and there's also an interesting hybrid one coming out of the Senate and the House as well. MASC hasn't taken a position of support for any of the bills in totality. We're monitoring right now to see where we would be. There is something troubling in House 70, which is the governor's bill. It seems like there's an assault on some what's called soft vocational programs. It looks like they're trying to move that out of Chapter 74 and into Chapter 70. So we need to be extremely vigilant. Computer programming and things like that. Yeah. So it has a very anti-vocational and comprehensive high school tenor to it. I have contacted our state senators and our state representatives, and I've expressed my displeasure, and they are fully on board with my perspective on that bill and that part of the bill in particular. Representative Lenatra and Representative Cutler, who is not one of our reps, who just comes a little north of here, attended a Chapter 70 program that we had down in Boston Tavern. Chris and Mike joined me for that. I would like to thank Rep. Lenatra for coming and Rep. Cutler for being there and explaining some of the things that are going on right now at the State House. Rep. Cutler actually then reached out and has drafted a letter asking that the per pupil minimum increment be raised from the proposed $20 in the governor's budget to $100 in the governor's budget. That would make a profound difference for Silver Lake. Currently, with the $20 per pupil increment increase, Silver Lake would be getting about $34,000 more in state revenues for next year under Chapter 70 funding. If it went up to $100, we would be receiving $172,000 in additional state resources under Chapter 70. Last year, we got to an all-time high with the per pupil increment. It was $55. Again, this is given out to towns that are considered to be able to support their schools with relatively little assistance. Again, the title of this entire increment is the Minimum Per Pupil Increment. So this is for towns that don't get much other support for other categories in the Chapter 70 formulation. So Senator Dimasito called me up and let me know he signed on to Rep. Cutler's letter. Rep. Lenatra called me up and let me know she's co-signed on to that letter as well. I have had difficulty reaching Senator Brady, but he still has time to sign on, so if any of you have his personal phone, please give him a call. I've reached out several times. I have not been able to make contact with him, but I can't imagine he wouldn't support it as well. Right now, I have about 70 different people signed on between the House and the Senate supporting Rep. Cutler's letter for that $100 per pupil increment increase. Senator Dimasito and I are going to be sitting down tomorrow together in his office, and we're going to be discussing his attempts to get us $75,000 for safety improvements here at the school. This is above and beyond the grant. He's trying to get into the budget right now in the original state of the budget. He says if he's not successful at this stage of the budget, that he will put it in when it gets to the conference committee as an earmark, as he pledged back when we were debating whether or not to take about $75,000 out of our capital plan for the lights. So again, Senator Dimasito has been a man of his word in pursuing that money for us and also reaching out for more ways that he can help us make this campus as safe as possible for all students. On Tuesday, I'll be going to UMass Amherst for a meeting with Commissioner Riley. There is about 400 people in attendance. This is really Commissioner Riley's look towards the future of how we're going to be changing some things in education. There's going to be some demonstrations of virtual reality learning and integrated lessons and backwards design, so I'm really looking forward to going to that and bringing back to this committee what I learned. Please don't forget that on May 1st, we have Day on the Hill. That's our opportunity to go up and advocate for public schools in Massachusetts. MTA has actually agreed not to hold their rally on May 1st, so we can have full access to the State House and advocate for the same thing, more or less, that the MTA would be there protesting. So we appreciate their cooperation. So that again is May 1st, it's Day on the Hill, and you can sign up for that at MASC's website. So stay tuned. The budget hearing again is next week on the 22nd at the State House.
So Jason isn't saying his own kudos, but I received a call the next day after the hearing from John Creed. Some of you may remember him fondly. And John Creed is not someone who gives out compliments lightly, so when he says something, he really means it with all his heart. And he said something which was sort of jaw-dropping to me. He said that Jason did the best presentation he has ever heard on explaining Chapter 70, and that only, I think it was himself and God are the only other people who understand it, but that he had never heard anyone give such an excellent presentation. And I have to tell you, I was absolutely floored because I've known John since I've been here, and he really would not say something that lightly. So I'm sorry I missed it, because I'm sure I would have learned something. So I did really want to share that. It sounds like he was phenomenal, which is not a surprise.
You know, it's getting hard for me to talk about John without crying sometimes.
Yeah.
He's a dear friend, and he's been an extraordinary mentor, and I would not be as capable of representing Silver Lake Regional Schools or the town of Plimpton if it wasn't for his mentorship and stewardship of my position. And I deeply honor his friendship and his commitment to the town of Kingston and to Silver Lake and to the schools of the Commonwealth. He's a great man.
Yeah, absolutely. So, sorry.
It's okay.
I didn't tell him I was going to do that.
I appreciate it. Onto negotiations. Sounds like you have some work to do. I'll give you the letter from our teacher, so you can reach back out and set up some PAC, unfortunately, Ed's not here to give us a report on PAC policy.
We have a meeting scheduled for 6:30 March 25th, which will be after the Denet meeting, and it will be held at Denet. Is it March 25th, Lisa?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good. It's March 25th at 6:30, which is not this Monday, the following Monday. There are only four policies. It should be very quick. I'm thinking if we're really lucky, maybe 20 minutes. I'd like to be optimistic. Three of them are the policies that Jill had referred to when we had our-
Stability, Educational Stability Review.
Dot, what she just said. That we had to make some changes on children from military families-
Foster care.
Foster care, homeless. So it's language that MASC just developed of policies. You would have assumed that DESI would agree with what MASC suggested, not as much as you might think. DESI asked us to basically rewrite the entire MASC policy, so all the districts that are accepting the MASC policy will not be accepted by DESI when they have their education stability review. So we have the three policies that DESI has said they will accept, so I just need you to sort of give it a blessing, and then we'll move it forward. The fourth policy is a wellness policy, and there was some wording on the policy from the John Stalker Institute, which is on food and nutrition, and it basically says we can't have any advertisements on any standing billboards or any of our signs during the school day that are, like, stagnant. So what that means is going forward, as we're trying to put in this scoreboard, the electronic scoreboard, on the football field, the athletic field. Sorry, I can be taught. And Eric had brought up a great point, that we were very concerned, because Dunkin' Donuts has been a great supporter of us. They have supported another sign. However, Martha came up with a creative solution to the problem. If there's banners that you can turn on and off, and that could only run during games or when the board was on, so if it's not a stagnant sign that is there during the school day, we could get Dunkin' Donuts or whoever, whatever business isn't actually on that list there. So it is a requirement to have it, and I think Martha has a plan going forward that we could still accept if Dunkin' Donuts or a comparable group chose to support us.
So you can't, there's a lot of signs all over the state at schools on scoreboards and stadiums.
You don't have to go backwards. It's just going forward.
Yeah, I know, but that puts a serious hamper on moving forward with getting funding.
Yep. It is. But again, you know, the concept of the electronic and the movement, I thought was a great solution.
It is, but the scoreboards have, they're built so that you can have a stationary stagnant one-
Absolutely.
-that's there that was paid for in quite some amount by one-
Absolutely.
-donor, so you can't do that anymore, that's what-
You can do it as long as it's on that approved list.
Or not approved business.
So like, a bank could do it.
A bank could do it, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
But not like, not like-
Not Chico.
No Taco Bell.
No Taco Bell.
So it would be, it would be just those four policies. Again, I anticipated it being a very quick meeting. I don't think it will be too difficult, and then we'll move it through for our two readings.
And I appreciate all the work that Jill's put into this to get us back in compliance with the policies. Have we reached back out to MASC to let them know that their policy failed?
I sent a request when I first found out to one person at MASC, asking if they, explaining what had happened, and asking if they had since revised it, and I didn't get a response.
Okay. Just considering how we usually have no problems with their policies, if you wouldn't mind, then I will be very kind. I just want to let them know so they can put an alert out to membership. Great, thank you very much. All right. Revolving funds?
No meeting.
No meeting. Okay. Safer. Madam Chair?
A couple days, we don't have our updated information yet on the roof evaluation, nor the evaluation of policy suggestions for practices, suggestions for the wastewater treatment plant. I would suspect between now and next year, we would have that information. As far as voting the capital plan, have we already done that through the budget process?
We voted it, so it's all set.
Okay, good, okay.
Yep, thank you.
And Christine mentioned at the Halifax Finance Committee meeting, the reason why we don't have the update on the roof right now is every time they've come to take the cuts, it's snowed on the roof. It's not because they're dragging their feet, they've been trying to move along, it's been Mother Nature getting in the way.
It does.
It does.
As long as we're not shoveling.
That's right, no more shoveling the roof.
So we do have a standing committee on school start times. It's on our agenda mostly as a placeholder to acknowledge that we all realize that school start times is an ongoing issue that faces all the schools in the Commonwealth. And again, I would encourage you, if you're interested in the topic, to look at MASC's webpage for the meeting in Marlboro on March 6th, which is a Saturday, about that topic. Treasurer's report.
Okay, we have regular day warrants circulating at a total of 950,239, spot 16. And then we have payroll warrants circulating for 831,454, spot 59.
Great. Thank you for filling in tonight, Paul. Appreciate it. Union 31? No meeting. We do have the upcoming joint meeting on April 11th. That's a joint meeting between us and the Silver Lake, and that will be here. And the timing for that meeting, would it be?
5:30.
5:30. Is that enough time for the joint meeting?
It's reviewing my evaluation. We could move it to 5:00 if you wanted, just seemed like 5:00 was a struggle for people.
Yeah, I realized that earlier start time is, can we just, what do we do if we overrun and we run it to 6 o'clock?
We would hold the school choice hearing like you did with public budget hearing, and then-
We could go back and then, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Can we post, like, a 6:15 start time for our regular meeting or no?
I think we will handle it.
But the only problem is-
We've already advertised the school choice in the newspapers. Yeah. I was saying, Valentine's Day, so would that be a similar procedure?
All right, sounds great.
I mean, I can move it to 5:15 if people want it.
Let's do, it worked fine last time. Okay. All right. So do we have any single signature warrants?
No.
Okay. So again, thank you all for your efforts tonight. It's deeply appreciated. Our next school committee meeting will be the April 11th meeting. We will begin at 5:30 with a joint meeting between us and Union 31, and we will convene the public hearing for school choice promptly at 6 o'clock. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you.